All right, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the audit presentation by Winterstave &amp; Company for fiscal year 2019-2020. I see Arv Druvenga is here and David Schmidt from Winterstave &amp; Company. So, thanks for being here.
All right. Good evening. Yes, I am Arv Druvenga and I'm the partner for Winterstave &amp; Company that is responsible for the audit services. And Dave Schmidt, as you mentioned, that he is the manager and has been responsible primarily for the fieldwork and initial report preparation again this year as he has been for several years. We do appreciate the opportunities to provide the audit services for the city and have two documents for you. One is a required letter to those charged with governance, just a short document that the auditing standards require us to provide to you. That just gives a very brief summary and overview of what the audit services entail. And then the bound audit report is what I'll spend a little bit of time going over with you this evening. If you would turn to page two. There are two parts of the bound document, pages two through four, and then the last four pages that really are our responsibility as an audit firm. The rest of the financial statements are the responsibility of the city. We do assess the city in putting them together in the format that is required by the auditing and accounting standards. On page two, it does introduce the financial statements. They are for the primary government of the city of Spencer as of and for the year ended June 30, 2020. And then management, as I mentioned, has the responsibility for the financial statements. They are presented on the cash basis of accounting. And then the auditor's responsibility is described as well. We are required to perform audit procedures according to the audit standards that are generally accepted in the United States. Onto page three. Because we do the primary government level of financial statements, we do not do what's considered the reporting unit of the city, which would encompass the Spencer Municipal Hospital audit as well. Since they are audited separately, it's not presented here with the city's audit, and that is why those top two paragraphs refer to an adverse opinion on the discreetly presented component unit, which would refer to the hospital. But in the middle of the page, the unmodified opinions is where we do give our opinion on the financial statements that are included, and that is that these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects on the cash basis for the governmental business-type activities. Each major fund and the remaining fund information for the primary government of the city of Spencer and the respective changes in financial positions are also included, and all of those are fairly presented in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. Some additional paragraphs follow referring to other information included in the document. There are two levels, and I'll have you turn to page 11. There are two levels of information that are provided for the city. The first is called the government-wide. That begins on pages 11 and 12. This method and required format shows the dispersments and then related revenues. And then on page 12 gives columns for governmental activities, business-type activities, and the total. So first, the net amount of the functions on the top half of the page. Then all the general receipts and transfers are added in at the bottom of the page. The third line from the bottom shows the change in cash basis net position combined for the two, approximately $2.1 million. The beginning fund balances and then the ending fund balances of approximately $37 million. On the following pages, 13 and 14, that total balance is broken down by much of the balance that is either restricted or non-spendable, and then the unrestricted portion is shown the second line from the bottom. So the more familiar way of looking at the financials starts on page 15, 15 and 16. This would be the fund level of financial statements. This provides your major funds and a column for all the non-major funds. For your information, there is a grouping schedule later in the audit report that we will not address, but that does provide all the individual funds that comprise the non-major governmental funds. So here again, the far right-hand column has a total. In this format, receipts and dispersments are then shown, then other financing sources. And about two-thirds of the way down the page, there's a double underlined amount, which is the cash basis balances at the end of the year. Two lines above that are the changes in cash balances. The beginning of the year balances are added in. Again, in the total column for the governmental funds, there was an increase of approximately $1.1 million with the ending balance at $19.9 million. A breakdown provided at the bottom of the page as well for restricted and committed funds that are not available for your discretionary spending. And then the unrestricted funds, approximately $3.2 million, are the second line from the bottom. Onto page 17 and 18. The same type of format is shown for proprietary funds, the individual major funds, and then the non-major funds shown in total, and then the grand total in the far-right-hand column. So a similar format. And again here, the net changes in cash balances, the third line from the bottom, very close to $1 million, almost exactly, cash balances are added in for the beginning of the year, leaving approximately $17.2 million at the end of the year. Once again, on the following two pages, 19 and 20, is a reconciliation of the restricted funds for debt service and some other post-closure care costs, and then the unrestricted balances on that. A variety of footnotes are also included in the audit report that provide a background information on how the different accounts and balances are derived. I will have you turn to page 25 for one new format that is required for this year, and that's the bonds and notes payable. Previously, there'd been some maturity schedule information later on in the report. Now that is required to be in the footnotes. So the bottom of page 25 gives a summary of the bonds and notes payable. Then onto page 26, individual maturities are shown by bond issue for the next five years and then five-year increments thereafter. Following that is additional information on each of the general obligation bonds, and then the same thing is included following that for the revenue bonds and notes. So you have some additional detail information presented related to the bonds and notes of the city. I'll just go past quickly unless there were any questions on the rest of the notes to the financial statement. And then if we turn ahead to page 52. On page 52 is where the budgeted amounts are provided and compared to the actual results. And then a variance is shown. So receipts and dispersments are shown at the top portion of the page. The dispersments, we're pleased to report, were well within the budgeted amounts for the fiscal year, and there were no individual function areas that exceeded the budgeted amounts. Other financing sources are included at the bottom of the page, and it then again reconciles to year-end balances. Then I will move ahead to page 63, which is the other report that we're responsible for. This is the independent auditor's report on internal control and compliance. There are a number of items that the state auditor requires us to evaluate as part of our audit procedures and some other referred to, referred for us to perform under government auditing standards. So those are all described on those two pages. And then our comments follow on the last two pages of the audit report on page 65 and 66. We did have one internal control deficiency. We noted as far as capital project contracts and some reconciliations between pay estimates being made to contractors and the way that fees are determined and calculated for engineering fees. And then we made some recommendations, and you can see the response that's included there from the city. And then on page 66, statutory reporting requirements. These are those that are required either positively or negatively by the state auditor's office. The only item we specifically had mention of is business transactions. We're required to list business transactions with other city officials or employees. So we do list the amounts that are transacted with Spencer Auto Parts, of which Mayor Robinson is part-owner of that organization. The state does have a threshold of $6,000. Under that, those expenditures or transactions with an entity is not considered to have a potential conflict of interest. Over $6,000, which was the case here, there is a possibility that it could be a conflict of interest. So we do recommend that the council would evaluate those expenditures and make sure that they are being done to your satisfaction and whether or not there were any additional procedures that you would feel is necessary to satisfy you to that regard. Similar to those types of expenditures, there is a new item stated this year, item 2E20 on restricted donor activities. This was a new item the state auditor required to be included, and it has to do with certain restrictions that donors would have to elected officials or officials of the organization. And we did not note any such transactions in the procedures that we did. And then really along that same line, just want to revisit, I guess, and address item 2B20 under questionable dispersments. We did not have any items that we noted, but we do just want to draw your attention to the fact that there is a requirement at the state level that all expenditures do meet the satisfaction of what is determined by the council as the public purpose for those expenditures. And there's an attorney general opinion that's referred to. However, there's very little detailed guidance that is provided through any state organization. So it does generally come down to your discretion as the council on making sure that you feel all expenditures are meeting the public purpose of the city residents and citizens. So that's a quick overview of the audit. Any questions that you would have? Yes, Bill? Well, they've not provided a lot of detail on that as well. This is the first year they've had it, and it just goes partly, I think, on any kind of items that citizens would provide individually to council members or city staff that could potentially influence them in a particular matter. So that's what it is related to primarily. All right. Thank you very much.
Did you turn it on?
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the presentation by Arv from Winterstave &amp; Company for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
So moved.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item four is the consent agenda. Four A is a motion to approve city council minutes of January 18, 2021. B, beer and liquor licenses. We have one Monterey restaurant and Godfather's, uh, two, and Godfather's Pizza. C, we have a resolution authorizing a permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending January 31, 2021. D is a motion to approve applications for residential tax abatement from Kenneth and Marilyn Ullman, 1811 20th Avenue West, and Michael and Connie Christopherson, 2006 20th Avenue West. And E is a motion to confirm Jobs Trust contribution of $45,000 for JHKH Holdings Incorporated for the renovation of the Oak Creek apartment complex. First by Bill. Second by Donovan. Discussion on these items?
Yeah, Mayor, I was looking at the Jobs Trust. You know, in past practices, given for renovation, generally what I've heard on the Jobs Trust generally is for job creation, and I always thought that was kind of the crux of the Jobs Trust process was how many jobs it was going to create and stuff. I've never really seen it in my, you know, 12 or 13 years on the council that it's gone for this purpose. And I just, I didn't know what Job Trust, what their criteria was completely on that. And so I was just kind of concerned on where these funds were used.
That's a good comment, Ron. So the Jobs Trust Board, as I mentioned in my cover sheet, has met several times about this particular project because it is so unique. You probably haven't seen it because I don't know that they've seen one like this. And Bill, you've been on the Jobs Trust Board for quite a while.
For 30 years. That's what I've seen, so.
Right. So when this request came, we spent a lot of time discussing if Jobs Trust was the right avenue for this type of project. And based on some past practices around housing and the commitment of Jobs Trust to support housing endeavors in the city of Spencer, they manage the Spencer Quality Housing Initiative currently. They felt that it was an appropriate venue to review the, review the request and make a decision on it. They went back and forth several times on what was, what would be appropriate, what the requirements would be, and landed on a forgivable loan in the amount of $90,000. The city and SMU would contribute equally to that. The property owner must invest a minimum of $750,000 in the renovations and rehab, so that does not include purchase of the building. It's direct infusion into the facility. And they have to hold the property for five years to prevent any kind of flipping, things like that. So that's where Jobs Trust landed on it. They thought it was appropriate, and it is a, it is a good project for the city. TIF doesn't apply to this because it's an existing building, and the increased value to the property isn't going to meet the TIF threshold. And we don't have a tax abatement program for this type of housing. And so this is where it landed. SMU Board met last week and approved their contribution, so that's why it's in front of you all today. Don may be able to shed some light. He was part of those meetings, or Bill, I know Donovan was part of the conversation as well.
And there's, and if, the forgivable portion is a, if they don't spend the total of 750, it's a calculation. So they spend 600 of the 750. That percentage is forgivable. The other has to be repaid.
Yeah, my biggest concern is, is it, what are we going to get out of this by giving this? Because it's probably not going to raise the value of the property because the stuff that I see is just cosmetic and is upkeep. You know, as a city, we're looking at raising tax base or whatever. This here project doesn't perceive me as raising the tax base. So I just don't see, you know, we have a tax abatement program in the residential on if you remodel your house of what it goes up over. You know, if your house is appraised at, let's say, $100,000, and then we remodel, and it goes up to 150, you get a tax abatement for those five years on that there. I would have rather seen this go in, you know, I have a real tough time giving money for renovations because who's going to come down the line next and ask for, I mean, we're really opening it up to other entities in town coming to the Jobs Trust. And I really just felt that Jobs Trust was there to create jobs. I mean, I, that was always my criteria. They ran the housing initiative, but they were just a facilitator, and they were just handing out the money and stuff. We had to have somebody to facilitate it. They didn't really vote on who got the money here. And I would have rather seen this maybe come up as a council, you know, and as SMU going to, if somebody comes in there and wants to, if they got a million-dollar product, are they going to give out 50,000 or 45,000 to the next group? I mean, if you're going to do it for this, is everybody that comes in with $750,000 worth of renovation going to get a business downtown or, I mean, or anywhere in town? If they come into you guys and want 45,000 and they're going to spend 50, or 750,000, is this opening that up to that, to that criteria?
Well, you make, you make good points, Ron. And not to be argumentative, almost everything that you mentioned, we discussed numerous times.
Yeah.
Because I'm the liaison between the council and utilities. And we talked about it at the utilities level. We've talked about it, Donovan, we've got, what, two or three meetings at least of Jobs Trust discussing it. And it really came down to part of bringing jobs to town is housing. And if we can improve this, the housing structure, that, I think that adds to it. I think the mayor made a good point, happened to point it out rotary, I think at your media, for the press conference you had this afternoon. We've got, what, 4,000-some workers who live outside of Spencer who would live here if they had a place to live. And that's a huge number. And so, again, everything you mentioned, Ron, we fully vetted.
Right.
And we believe that we've got an independent person who's coming to town, investing in a relatively large complex and providing, and I don't remember how many units it is.
50, well.
50 or 60 units.
Can't tell you off topic.
Yeah, but a good number of units and putting significant dollars in investment in the city of Spencer. And this is what it came down to. This seemed to be the best vehicle. We even discussed the possibility of running it through SEDC like we did our housing infill project. And we said, let's keep them separated. That's a different project. Jobs Trust seems to be the right vehicle. And again, everything you mentioned, we vetted many times and came to this conclusion that we believe this is a good, sound project for the city of Spencer and satisfying some of the housing needs that we have.
Right.
Did I answer too much?
No, I, no, I appreciate that.
Great points.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, my own personal belief, but we can disagree and still agree that it's, I agree it's a good project that they're doing. I just not sure that was the avenue, but I thank you.
Your point, actually, to open it up, boy, we talked about that forever.
Yeah.
I think it, you know, there's always that possibility, but having a set of projects, I don't know what the end of all coming down to.
Right.
Anyway, that was, I'd like you.
Thank you.
Ron, I look at it from a whole different perspective other than what the Jobs Trust, I think what they did was good. But I look at it, there's some cities and towns that have large units like that, and what happens to them? They just use the depreciation, use depreciation, even if a new person buys it, they don't fix it up until it's not worth anything. And then what happens? The city has to go out and clean it up, and that could cost 200,000 to half a million dollars to clean that mess up. So I look at it as being a good investment for us there, 45, from that standpoint.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the items? Appreciate the conversation. Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, nay. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five is a public hearing. Before I read the public hearing, you'll notice on the agenda, I just want to go over a housekeeping procedural thing quick. So in times where there's projects that we know are in the pipeline and it's, we can expedite the governmental process to not hold those projects up if everyone is in agreement, we can waive, combine readings together on an ordinance. So you'll see on the agenda, we have the option to do that after we pass the initial one. If we do that, it's procedurally just a way to speed the project up for the private sector that has an interest in what we're going to talk about during the public hearing. So I just wanted to go over that quick. So 5A is a public hearing on proposed zoning ordinance text amendments amending Title IX, Chapters 5 and 8 of the Spencer City Code concerning can and bottle redemption centers. As a reminder, this was discussed, vetted, and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval at the council level. I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments against? If there are, you can just go to the microphone. None? Have we received any written comments in favor of?
We have none, Mayor.
All right. Are there any oral comments in favor of? I see none. I declare the public hearing closed. Item 5A1 is a roll call vote on an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapters 5 and 8 of the Spencer City Code concerning can and bottle redemption centers. This would be the first filing. First by Bill.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this?
I believe this is probably, I mean, if this is what it, if somebody's looking to put in a can redemption center, it's been a long time coming in Spencer. So, I mean, I, it's great if it happens, and that's kind of, you know, why definitely we'll vote for them to, you know, put it in because we definitely need one in town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5A2 is a roll call vote waiving the second filing and proceeding to the final consideration.
I'll make a motion to waive the second filing.
First by Ron.
Second.
Second by, I'm going to give it to Tracy. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 5A3 is the final adoption of ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 4 and 8 of the Spencer City Code concerning can and bottle redemption centers. First by Tom. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item six, old business. 6A is an ordinance to update the schedule of street and sidewalk grades. This is the final filing. First by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by George. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item seven, new business. We have some items. 7A is a motion to approve Iowa Department of Transportation agreement for a surface transportation block grant program, federal aid swap project 2021, fourth overlay project. grant program, federal aid swap project, 2021 fourth overlay project.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Questions or discussion on this?
What is it?
Tom?
Open the room. What is it?
I'm pulling out my notes.
Mark will have it.
Get unmasked here, see if we can go.
I haven't started yet. So, good evening. This will be the agreement for the, basically it's the FAST Act funding, which used to be a federal T-21, if you recall. About five years ago, we make these applications five years in advance. And it's, if the area has regional significance on the road, we're able to go to our technical committee, submit the application and be approved. We're approved up to four hundred thousand dollars for the resurfacing of East and West Fourth Street from approximately the ten hundred block of West Fourth Street to Fifth Avenue East. So that'll be the fed, it's now, it's kind of complicated because it now uses swap funding through the state, but it's basically the same fund. So this is the official agreement for that. That'll be your next year's big project. The reason it stops at Fifth Avenue East because that'll be a following project with the total reconstruction later, requiring some storm sewer separation.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item seven B is a resolution approving a revised job description for the city of Spencer Planning Director, authorizing the creation of the position of Spencer Human Resources Manager and approving the job description. These were discussed at the personnel, the last Personnel Committee meeting. First by Tom, second by Lauren. Discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item seven C is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 waste treatment plant improvements project with a hearing date of March 15, 2021, and a letting date of March 4, 2021. First by George, second by Donovan. Discussion or questions on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Seven D is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of, between the city and the Spencer Employees Association Incorporated for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, including amendments to the bargaining unit. First by Lauren, second by Tom. Discussion, questions on this item? No? All right. Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. One shall, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
I think if nobody's on, it does that beep. We don't have the whole music anymore, but.
Gotcha. Item eight, can we just turn the volume down?
Yes, I will. There we go.
All right. Department head reports, Planning Department, Amanda?
I just have a couple of quick things. Last week, the Planning Department hosted the Northwest Iowa Area Inspectors Group. They meet quarterly. And Robyn and Anna also facilitated a meeting with the SEDC Board to learn more about rental inspection programs.
All right. Any questions for Amanda?
I thought the presentation regarding the rental part was really informative. I was glad I was there. Something that, going to take some study, but I think it's good for the city.
B, Library, Mandy?
Hello. The biggest news we have is that today we soft opened to the public. So the doors are unlocked. We are requiring people to wear masks in, inside, but you can come in and browse and use the computers. So we have moved to the phase where we are, we are not just by appointment anymore. We are now, the doors are unlocked, come on in. Please don't rush everybody at once, though, because then we'll go crazy. So, but we're still doing curbside and you can still make an appointment to come in if you'd like to. So you can just give us a call and we can tell you more about it. We don't have the meeting rooms or the toys out or the bathrooms open yet. So we're kind of moving towards that, that phase. But we are open, except we closed on President's Day, which is a Monday. Kids and teens, the kit for this month is a hot chocolate bomb. So it's a ball of chocolate filled with hot chocolate and marshmallows and you put it in hot milk and it'll melt and turn it into hot chocolate. So the kids get every, the kids and teens get everything to make something like that and they're free. So you can call us to arrange a curbside pickup or come in and pick one up of those. And we also, our subscription boxes for kids and teens have been really popular. So you get, you answer a little, they answer a little sheet of interests and then we select books and then you get activities and a little treat and you return the books in the box, but all the other stuff is yours to keep. So that's been popular. We do that once a month. The adult programs, we have, or the adult kits, we have one from the first through the thirteenth, and those are gumdrop roses. So if guys, they're really easy to make. So if you're looking for a last minute gift for your girls, this would be a good one. They'd love it because you made it and it's free, it's free. So, I mean, you can't get any better than that. And then from the sixteenth through the twenty-seventh, there is an African-inspired wristlet keychain kit. So you can make a little keychain so you don't lose your keys. And so that's why supplies last. And then on the eighteenth, we have a Zoom program that is Lincoln Race and the Challenge of Self-Government. And that's by Dr. Lucas Morale. And he is from the, he is the professor of the Politics Department in Washington and Lee University. And then we have our Zoom book discussion coming up, Caleb's Crossing by Geraldine Brooks. We do have our newsletters available in person, but they are also, if you become a friend of the library, you get electronically. And they, it's available on our Facebook page and website as well. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mandy. C, Fire Department, Chief Conyon?
Good evening, all. Welcome to February. January saw forty-five calls for service, most notably, we were quite busy this past weekend. We had three structured fires, each duration of anywhere from five to six hours on scene, anywhere from fifteen to twenty firefighters, no loss of life, some good strong extensive damage to some property, sadly. We had a couple of false alarms. We had a couple of gas order calls. We have had a couple of burning some trash still, if you can believe that or not. That's still not allowed, so we still don't want that. We did have a couple of motor vehicle accidents. Our EMS saw sixteen runs, including some fall victims. We have had to deal with COVID because it's still around. So we had eight positive victims of COVID that this fire department helped transport. Our ambulance that's on in-house had a couple of runs, including a couple of traumatic cuts to a few victims, as well as a couple of overdoses. A couple of special duties that are always a pleasure is burning of the pines. We got to do a standby there, which is a great project. Way to go, bro. We did some EMS education. This month it included pediatric trauma and our, this was done via GoToMeeting platform, as well as a couple of guys at separate rooms within the firehouse. Learning how to take care of your puddle of love is very important. Lastly, we also sent a couple of technicians to a car seat installation. And we are going to be offering a, a possible hosting site for this summer for getting a couple more technicians and putting that in. Lastly, we are still continuing to work with Fire Service Training Bureau, teaching, teaching a Fire One class, and our subjects have included some self-contained breathing apparatus confidence course, as well as some fire ground skills. That's sort of what's been going on in January. Any questions or comments? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Chief. Police Department, Chief Warburton?
Good evening. The Police Department responded to nine hundred and sixty-nine calls for service the month of January, and we performed twenty-nine arrests. The 911 board meeting was held here last week. Result of that meeting, they decided to purchase new portable radios for all Spencer police officers and Clay County deputies at a price tag of about ninety-two thousand dollars. This month saw the completion of our cell phone carriers. We switched to AT&amp;T FirstNet, the Police Department did, which allows the police priority cell coverage in times of disaster or cell tower overload. Finally, today, the officers and dispatchers had their COVID-19 immunization clinic today, and we had fifty percent of our employees participate in that. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mark?
Good evening again. Believe it or not, the Street Division, been snow and ice removal. Kind of seems like a lot of those storms have been coming on the weekends for some reason. We did a little overhead hoist repair, blasted and painted one of the dump bodies in the shop, received the new mowing tractor that you folks approved a while ago. That with the sidearm mower is in, in our possession now. A lot of equipment maintenance this time of year, building maintenance, sewer calls. And we start, pretty soon we'll be starting on the street sweepers. So it's just a never-ending cycle. The Solid Waste Division, it's been a normal pickup, but there is one small issue I want to kind of remind the folks again. The automated pickup's going very well, except we've, we've got a few folks that are not putting the cans facing the right direction. And what happens is that the garbage will flip out or they can't get it picked up. So there's arrows on it. Please follow that. Handles towards the back of the street. We'll probably put a warning on those and then the next time we won't dump them. We're just, it just creates a big mess. So if you could help us get the word out on that, we would appreciate that. They've continued with appliance demanufacturing. Also, one of the Packers is in the process of, Packer Bodies is in the process of being blasted and painted as well. And that's about all I have for the evening. Craig worked really hard with, I guess, on a FEMA project, trying to do a cost analysis on that. Worked with Jim, we appreciate that. So that was one of the office things, as well as some airport grant things. That, any questions? Kind of threw that in as an afterthought. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, Park and Recreation, Jared?
Good evening. We're starting to think spring a little bit, so we're going through some of our landscaping needs here for the spring. Getting things ordered and prepped, ready for that. We're contacting all our seasonal help that we had last year to see if we have any returning help. We'll be putting a call out once we know the numbers of who's coming back, and then we'll, we'll figure out a number we need for, for our seasonal help. We'll be putting out an ad for Campground Host soon as well to take over those duties. We continue to, just like the Street Department, work on equipment and maintenance and building, repairs, things like that. Working on events and programmings for, for the spring and summer. The Trail Project, we're still working on those needs. We need to get a better idea of how many panels, what we need to replace out there, when we just need to spend a little bit more time to fine tune some of those numbers. We have put out a request for a proposal for a tree removal and trimming contract for the city. Those proposals are due back to us by February ninth at noon, and then we will discuss those bids at our Park Board meeting that evening. The Rocket Slide Project, we're still working on that. Think we have fairly good numbers, working with the No Boundaries Groups and Eric Johansson on those. We just got to start getting a fundraising campaign, look for volunteers, and hopefully have a ribbon cutting by Flag Fest is, is kind of our timeline. See the events. We had a snow showing event here two weeks ago. We had seven families attend, which I thought was a really good number for that. It was in conjunction with the Clay County Conservation Board. We held it at East Leech Park. Did some of that around, close to the river, got to wander around in the woods a little bit. So I thought that was a good turnout for that. We're supposed to have an ice fishing event with Iowa Great Lakes Fishing Club. I had stollies this weekend, but due to the cold temperatures, I believe that's been postponed. So we'll have some more information on, on rescheduling that as well, too. So.
Any questions for Jared? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Golf course, is Brian on the phone? I don't know.
No.
No. He's on vacation. Okay. Well, wherever you're at, Brian, I hope you're enjoying the vacation.
Somewhere warm, yes.
H, City Attorney, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. January was somewhat busier than average month. A few things I would highlight. We viewed a couple of properties that are subject to our pending abandoned property litigation that originally started with about nine. And the two we viewed were completely cleaned up, ready to be listed for sale. And previously, there had been a couple others. So the, the owner is making progress. When he, when he can get his, get the help he needs and focus on a project, he does a good job of finishing them. So that's, I think, positive. Spent some time on the pending appeal of the Isanova Building Permit for their new tank. It's been placed in service and the Challenger decided to ask us to delay any hearing. And they're going to continue to try to work, I guess, as neighbors out there. So maybe that'll be resolved without formal hearing by the city. As to the city's purchase of the Kiger Farm, that's going to be closed on Wednesday. The sellers had, there's four sellers involved and they had a little trouble getting all the deeds, but we have them now. So on Wednesday, the city will own that property. Been working with SEDC, Spencer Economic Development, on some, some projects they're working on. And that's what we've been up to.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? Item nine, Engineers Report?
I have nothing in that C.
More questions for Jim? At least it's wide open.
I have no.
Oh, Carrie?
No.
Sorry. We'll rewind. Engineers Report, Jim?
[laughing]
Jim doesn't have anything. He asked if anybody had questions. Nobody had questions. I think we're caught back up. All right. Item ten, City Managers Report?
Thanks, Mayor. I spent a majority of the last couple of weeks working with Brian on budget preparation and planning for the upcoming Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. Last week, we met with all of the department heads except the two that are, that were out on vacation. So we'll get that finished before tomorrow. Also spent some time preparing for the Long Term Planning Committee meeting that Lauren facilitated last week, and the Public Safety Meeting where we reviewed the city's snow removal process on sidewalks. That committee determined that they didn't want to make any, any recommendations for changes to that. The WOW team met on Thursday and Jared led the group through an exercise to prioritize those projects. I also spent time last week working with Jenna Bedwell on the rollout of the employee evaluation process, which will occur tomorrow. We'll do a training session with all supervisors and leadership and then a rollout with other employees. On Thursday, the SEDC Board met with representatives from Sioux Center and Orange City. Sioux Center, as you may be aware, has had a rental inspection program in place for quite a number of years. And Orange City, tonight, actually, is doing the first reading of their inspection program. As Bill said, it was, it was very informative. It was about a year ago, maybe less than that, that the long-term It was about a year ago, maybe less than that, that the Long Term Planning Committee initially discussed the potential for a rental inspection process and asked us to bring more information back. We've tried numerous times to coordinate meetings, but with COVID, this was, as soon as we were able to make that happen. Let's see here. Spent some time preparing for this meeting, and also working on the hiring process for our HR manager position and the Planning Director position, so we can get moving on that quickly. Spent some time with leadership from the hospital and public health, as they work on COVID-19 vaccination clinics and what role, if any, we might play in helping that. And then lastly, spent a couple of hours this week attending the SGR Servant Leadership Conference, and two highlights were General Jim Mattis was the keynote over two days. Really great things to say about leadership. And then Peter Kagayama, who wrote the book Love Where You Live, was also a speaker and talked about the emotional infrastructure of places. So that's how I've spent the last couple of weeks. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Item 11, Mayor's Report. Couple items. We have an appointment to the Library Board to fill. Karen Carey resigned. Her term goes till June 30 of 2022, and David Lyons has expressed interest in that, so I would entertain a motion to appoint David Lyons to the Library Board. First by Lauren.
I'll second it.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All opposed.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And I did have another person, Mandy, who is interested, so if you do have another opening, there is at least one more person who's interested in serving, so.
Now we're full.
Now we're full, finally. Let's see here. I want to address really quick what Arv talked about with the business transactions in the audit, you know, with elected officials. If anybody in the public has a question on that, the majority of that business was, stems from a sealed bid that deals with parts that go into Public Works. And Spencer Auto Parts won that bid last year. We did not win it this year, so I doubt you'll see that come up again on the audit. But if anybody has questions, that's where the majority of that business came from, was actually on a bid process. So just wanted to address that really quick. The Stollies fundraiser, Jared mentioned the trail out there. I did visit with Bob Rose after Rotary today. They're at about $37,000 worth of pledges and commitments of cash to put towards the repair of that. I did talk to the other co-chair, Mike Harlemann, and just wanted to relay, Mike does have an expressed interest and desire that the council strongly considers matching the funds that come in from the private sector, from the public sector, to get as much repair work as possible that's done out there. I think Mike brings up a good point, you know, in the larger conversation that we've talked about for a number of years, is we now have 18 miles of trail. Our maintenance fund, in and of itself, is probably behind where it really should be from a fund balance, and so while that trail system out there is 25, maybe 30-plus years old, you know, in another 20 or 30 years, we're going to have a significant amount of trail that's going to need attention. And so during the budget process, it would be good to have a conversation, I think, regarding, you know, trail maintenance and how we do that. And, you know, if we have folks from the private sector who are willing to donate, you know, does that accelerate maybe some of our, you know, budgetary aspect towards repair? So I would encourage us to have a conversation about that this month. Vaccine information, people have reached out to Amanda or I or other people about vaccines. In Clay County, it's disseminated through public health, but there's also, I believe, Walgreens, and do you remember, Amanda, is it Thrifty White will also have doses available, maybe?
Yes.
Possibly.
Yeah, they're through the national.
The national distribution?
Distribution. Hy-Vee and Walmart may have some available at some point.
So please pay attention to the hospital website, as well as the newspaper and the radio, to be not only aware of when vaccines are available, but who's eligible for those vaccines at that time. We're not healthcare providers, we're the government locally, but we're happy to get you to the right place. So the healthcare system is the one that's managing the vaccine rollout. 2020 Year in Review, we did a press conference at 2:00 and just reviewed some of our accomplishments in 2020 and what we're looking ahead to in 2021. I met with Amanda this morning, and we went over them. I just want to review them really quick. If you're bored and want the detailed explanation of what we did, you can tune into the press conference. But the priorities, when I ran in 2019 to focus on, there was three, ag tech, advanced niche manufacturing, and commercial air service, just to recap those really quick. Last spring, Kylie Miller of The Corridor and myself were registered to go to the World AgriTech Conference in San Francisco, and the goal was to visit with companies who are looking to expand into the Upper Midwest. We did have some people who were interested, and then COVID hit, and that conference got canceled. And so we obviously still have an interest in moving towards an agri-tech, I think, leaning portfolio in our industrial recruitment, but we didn't get very far in it because of COVID and the shutdown of travel. Advanced niche manufacturing, one nice win there was the Jobs Trust gift to Godberson Manufacturing in the West Industrial Park that added 25 jobs out there and filled an empty building when Simonsons left. So that's a good win. Commercial air service, as everyone knows, we were deep into the conversations in community-wide and regional survey of viability of an air service, and then again, COVID hit. We had had conversations as a council about what our tolerance was to try to invest in getting a commercial service here, and with COVID and the shutdown, it really slowed those conversations. The quick update on that is the air service contract in Mason City and Fort Dodge that Air Choice One had, they did not get the renewal on. Sky West, I believe, will take that over, which is a jet service that will fly out of Fort Dodge and Mason City. So the desire continues to try to have some type of connectivity here, but the variables have changed pretty significantly in the last 12 months. And so, you know, we'll continue to have conversations and see what the path forward is as it relates to that. Main Street, I talked to Nancy, and I want to get my information correct here, because there's been a lot of activity downtown. And in 2020, the following businesses moved in or renovated buildings. Coil Law, Craig Niederheiser State Farm, the Iowa Project Brewery, Prairie Plans, Vermeer Glass, which did the presentation at Rotary today, they've got some fantastic items that they do in there. Wheezy's with their expansion in facade rehab. Hanson's Clothing, the Executive Suites next to Jimmy John's. Community Insurance was 2019, but it was close to 2020, and a handful of other ones. And Old Beehive Building, the Bridal Shop, that's been announced it's going to go in where White Drug used to be downtown. So all of these things, in a normal year, are very indicative of a healthy economy, and I think especially during 2020, in being retail and being downtown and businesses in the downtown, I think that's a good indicator of our health as a community and the desire of business owners to be located down there. Really quickly, our building permits were up. Total valuation was a $27.3 million increase over 2019. I'm sorry, no. The total valuation was $27.3 million, which is an increase of $10.5 million over 2019. So permits were up. Let's see here, Jobs Trust, we talked about, Retail Kickstarter awarded $36,500 to local businesses, which would include Game State, The Loft at Prest, which won a State of Iowa Award, as well as Vermeer Glass. And so again, we talk about leverage with public dollars and our bank partners, and those are examples of that. We had a Black Lives Matter protest in June, if you all recall, and it was carried out without incident, which is very thankful. I think the citizens, as well as the regional law enforcement presence that were here, were incredible, and so want to thank everyone involved with that as they exercised their First Amendment rights. We completed a housing study, as well as a labor shed study. Just want to share with you one statistic that I found interesting on that. In the town of Spencer, related to the labor shed, 7,391 people hold employment in town. Of those commute in, the number is 4,394, or 59.5%. So 60% of our workforce commutes into town. That's why we see a lot of headlights this time of year in the morning coming into town. And those who reside in Spencer but leave the community during the day to go work is 2,440. Those who reside here and work here is 3,000. So some interesting things, I think, as it relates to our discussions around housing and the demand for housing, and where can we grow first as a community? And the number that jumps out to me is the 4,394 people who commute in from a 40, 50-mile radius. And I think as we look at stratifying our different levels of housing and trying to attract those, in the housing study, 40% of those surveyed who commute in would live here if they had comparable living expenses. So roughly the same size of a house, same, you know, mortgage payment. If everything was equal, they'd prefer to live here. And so as we continue to plan our community, I think those are important things to think about. The sidewalk program, the council did a great job rejuvenating. We had a record year in the last three or four years, I believe, compared to that. We completed the Personnel and Wage Study. We took some actions on that tonight with some new creations of jobs. Jared has done a good job with the Park Master Plan. I believe there's going to be a couple projects that are going to move up to the council level to talk about, should we fund, should we not fund, how do we prioritize? And what a great situation it is to have a debate in a community that we're talking about these types of things. If you go to the League of Cities meetings, you know that not every community has those variables that they can do. Phase two of Windcrest down by the Mall was completed. The Safe Routes to School and the Sidewalk by Walmart, as well as over by East Leach, were completed. I believe those were significant projects. People are a lot safer now. 150th Anniversary for Spencer is this year. The Sesquicentennial, is that right? Okay, there we go. I believe there'll be two, Sharifa can talk about it, obviously, but there's two main timeframes, Flag Fest and then October. So what's that? Yeah, starts with S, ends with L. That's about what I got. The Rocket Slide, Jared mentioned. Storm Sewer Separation Project on West Fourth, the Shoneman Expansion. We sold some property to Shoneman's, you know, another business that's expanding in town. I see the structure is up there, so that's exciting to see. It was a dry year, there wasn't a lot of flooding. That was nice, that we didn't have to deal with that, as we have the past three, maybe four years. The ATV ordinance, well, it seems like a long time ago. That was actually last year, ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts. So had a lot of positive feedback, and I talked to, Chief had mentioned a while ago that there really hasn't been a whole lot of incident, you know, with that. Everybody's been, I think, a pretty good steward of that ordinance, and so that is good. The recycling container expansion down to Hy-Vee, that mirrors Walmart, was a good deal, and I'm proud of the community that we were able to keep our ball diamonds open and the pool open and the golf course open during the pandemic. Those are important, I think, social activities for a community to participate in, especially in the Midwest in the summer. And so the other big thing was the movement into this facility, and one of the goals was technology, that we improved our technology. And now the citizens have access to not only SMU, to watch the council meetings, but Facebook Live, as well as the YouTube channel, and so one of the goals was to connect better, and I think we're doing that. So thank you to everybody who's involved in making that happen. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
As long as you turn your mic on.
As long as I turn my mic on. Well, Brian can turn it on for me, and Karen can yell at me, so.
I thought we had a new council member. I heard Mike. Mike.
Looking Ron with the joke.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing that you overlooked in your being very low-key about presenting things, that you stated there was no incidents at the Black Lives Matter demonstration. There was an incident where the mayor gave a terrific speech, and the young lady was so infatuated she fainted.
Yeah, it might have been the 110 heat index, George, I think, maybe.
We have a new rock star in Spencer, our mayor.
That was good that she was able to get help, so. All right, item 12, Council Committee Reports.
'Tis the season for meetings. We have a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, February 2nd, at 6:30 PM. That committee will reconvene on Thursday, February 4th, at 2:00 PM. We don't anticipate getting through all of the initial budget discussions in one evening. Committee of the whole will meet on Monday, February 8th, at 6:30, to hear the budget recommendation from the Finance Committee. Committee of the whole will meet again on February 10th at 5:00 for goal setting, and we'll have a regular City Council meeting on Monday, February 15th, at 6:30. We'll all see a lot of each other in the next two weeks. I'll bring treats.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Item 13, I would entertain a motion to approve the Bills and Claims. First by Bill. Second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, Other Business Opportunity to Address the Council. Who would like the mic? Sharifa.
If I can, for a few moments. First of all, I just wanted to thank you all for the continued funding for the Chamber, also for Flag Fest and for the 150th. We certainly appreciate that, and also just the continued partnership that you have with the Chamber. With that being said, the, as the mayor had mentioned, Flag Fest and the 150th, the big weekend, will be Flag Fest weekend, June 11th through the 13th. There are going to be different events, basically that started New Year's Eve all the way through October. We will have a little celebration, the, like, October 10th, 11th, or 9th and 10th, which is the actual anniversary of Spencer becoming a city. So we're hoping to actually get a press release out, like, the 17th or 18th. We have a few more committee meetings, just trying to finalize some of the events and timelines and things like that for the 150th, and then we'll get that out to the committee, or out to the community. The Chamber Foundation worked, did several porkloin giveaways in 2020. One of them was right before Christmas, and we strategically just worked with different entities that work with those that are likely already on a food program, or we knew could use a little extra boost. And so we gave about, away about 5,000 pounds of pork right before Christmas, and that was a really great activity, and we couldn't have done it without those businesses that sponsored, a lot of the CPA firms, banks, and then certainly working with SMU, and then Greg Lear at Spencer Ag. That was a really great partnership. We're going to be starting up our ambassador visits in March, and we are actually going to be splitting our ambassadors into two groups, an A group and a B group. We had about 20 new businesses that joined in 2019 and into 2020, and we either scheduled them and had to cancel them, or just postpone them altogether, so we're hoping to get back out to them as well. We also unveiled a new website, and we're working with our members to make sure that those improvements are impacting them fully, and that's going really well, and so I really appreciate everyone's patience as we do that. Of course, we've had our fair share of event cancellations and postponements. We are not having Egg Outlook, which typically happens in February. We just didn't feel like it was something that we needed to or could really go forward with at this time. There will be some other things that we're going to be doing, but taking into consideration social distancing guidelines. And finally, the Eggs and Issues Forums. We held our first one on January 23rd, and Auditor Rob Sand was able to join us virtually, so technology has been a really nice addition, enabling those to join us at those times. We have two more coming up, February 27th and March 20th, and those formats will be determined soon. So, any questions? All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, excuse me. Small point of order, going back to items 7, 8.
Yes.
I want to make sure Teresa got the motion in second, because I did not.
Okay.
7, 8. I got moved by Hanson, seconded by Larson.
Great. My attention apparently wandered.
That's okay. All right. Anyone else?
Four and a half hour early, happy birthday to our city manager.
Oh.
Happy birthday, Amanda. Anyone else? All right. What's that? Oh, yeah, Super Bowl, Sunday. My son's a big Tampa Bay fan, so we're going to be, he'll be all Buccaneers. I'll just be agitating him. Go Chiefs.
Is he a Brady fan or a Tampa Bayer?
He's all Brady, you know, Evans, Gronk, the whole. He went from nothing to Tampa Bay.
What's going on, Jess?
I know, I just watched the show. Item 15, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Lauren. Second by Donovan. All those in favor?
All opposed?
All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a great evening.